Let's believe it.
To the flyer of the United States mayor. Institute Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a forum.
We do.
Okay, all right, so the first item is the review and approval of the minutes of the July first, twenty twenty four meeting.
I'll move that we accept this as written.
All right, Alex made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Polly has a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Um, the next item is the public hearing. Should we skip that? Or what?
So to you.
Okay. We'll try and go with the public hearing, the consideration adopted adoption of the twenty twenty four millage rates. Council, all the information is in the packet. So. Floyd, do you wanna?
Certainly, I provided on page five, you'll see the page number at the bottom of your agenda packet. Uh, I provided on page five, basically just a description of what is a property tax millage rate and how it's calculated. Uh, again, it's basically taking the fair market value of the property, uh, reducing it by forty percent, that's how you get your assessment. And then a millage is your, um, it is what you're taxing times every one thousand dollars of that assessed value. And as you will see, um, toward the bottom of page five, I actually spoke about what the town is doing. You'll recall back in June, I actually brought up to you about, do you want to have, um, any sort of a tax increase or do you wanna take a full rollback? Full rollback is no tax increase. Um, per the tax commissioner, a full rollback for this town is one point seven two six mils. On page six, I showed you a, a description of what a fair market value is. The percentage is forty percent, assessed value, what the millage rate is, and then what a property would be taxed at, what would be the tax rate, assuming there is no exceptions, uh, for this millage rate. So a house that has a fair market value of a hundred thousand dollars would be assessed at forty thousand, with the town's full rollback, as I've been directed, at one point seven two six. That means a house with a fair market value would be paying sixty nine dollars and four cents in tax. Okay? A hundred and fifty thousand is a hundred and three dollars, you can see I've provided the documentation for you. What I do think is interesting, at the very bottom of the line, one of the, one of the services this town does is provide residential garbage service. Well, we are actually, um, paying for a hundred and forty-three residential addresses. Every month, every residential address is twenty-two, twenty-five a month. So if you get garbage picked up at your house by the town, that costs the town twenty-two, twenty-five. If your house is at four hundred thousand dollars fair market value, by the time that you get this full rollback, you will have paid two hundred seventy-six in taxes to the town, but the town would have paid two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for your garbage, which means we're only getting, basically, if your house is anything under four hundred thousand, you're getting taxed and we're not getting the revenue back off of it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay? Another thing to bear in mind is, we're getting, we're assuming we're gonna get about twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars in taxes this year. Because assessments went up, we're assuming, and assumption is always a big word, is you never know how numbers will totally play out, but we're assuming we're gonna get two hundred and sixteen more dollars this year than last year. That's because of assessments, not because we're raising taxes, it's just assessments go up, so we get a little bit more. What is interesting is that we are required to put in a five-year, uh, tax history in the local organ or the minimum times tariff. The cost is four hundred dollars for that. We're getting two hundred sixteen potentially over, which means we're actually getting less in revenue, additional revenue than we do just to pay the advertisement to actually have this, does that make sense? You understand? So, my recommendation, especially based off of council and direction of the council, is to take a full rollback of one point seven two six, uh, and if that's the case, and if the council agrees, I would need your approval to sign the resolution, for the mayor to sign the needed documents, we'll need it over to the tax commissioner.
Was there any discussion at all about changing it, I'm just one meeting and I may have missed it.
Changing it to?
Changing the, there's been a lot of fuss through the county and the different towns about the tax increases and I just wondered if I had not heard any discussion about I was changing it at all, even though you've given us all this information, has there been any thought at all to that?
Without raising it?
No, but lowering the millage, and I know you said it, if I understood correctly, you said it would not have a whole lot of money.
That's correct. It does not. It does not lower, so if you're talking about taking less than the millage rate, is that what you're asking for, recommended rollback? It would not give you, it would not do much, it wouldn't give you much in return, but it would do, is it would go into, uh, basically the type of revenue we received this year, it would actually undercut that a little bit, and we're gonna be doing that right at the time, and everything is rising in cost anyway. Yeah, I, I just don't see, um, as one person used to say, the juice works the squeeze unless, I think we take the full rollback and call it a day.
Is the trash the main thing that's making help in making that decision, your, your recommendation?
It's not just. No, no, I'm act, my recommendation is that I think we're fine financially, I don't know that we will have to, I think as the years progress and things get more expensive, we're gonna have to be considerate of that.
Yeah.
But I think right now, we're good, in my opinion, we're good, I don't see a need to raise taxes. And in this particular climate where everybody's stopping with raising taxes, I do think it's healthy to say we're gonna maintain, hold the line, don't raise any kind of tax at all. I think we're fine financially that way.
Okay, in that case, then I'll move that we accept the rollback. Public hearing.
You want to ask anybody from the public?
Yes, why didn't anybody from the public?
Anyone else increase in taxes?
No. All right, so now we continue.
Close the public.
Okay, so we now closing the public hearing. All right.
Now we need a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the millage roll back anymore.
Okay, like a motion to approve the?
I'm just kidding, yeah, I'll make that motion, we accept the rollback millage rate.
Alex made the motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, Tom's second, all in favor? Unanimous? All right. Um, the next item is new business, so the first thing we have on there is the consideration of request for a special use permit for Sharpsburg Baptist Church.
Go again.
Here we go again.
My turn.
Yeah.
Your turn.
Yeah. My name's Wallace, I'm the pastor of the church, and I realized when I was coming over here, I thought, you know, I was really rude last time when I was here, and I normally don't do that. But I wanted to thank you all for what you're doing in the town, because I suspect, I don't know, that you're not doing this for the glory, the fame, or the money. I thought that'd be, I thought that'd be the response to pretty reasonable guests.
Well, that applies to everybody but Julie, she's in it for all of us.
Oh, she's got all that going on, bullying and everything? But we appreciate what you're doing, in a lot of ways, we're kind of in the same boat, because we're, we're offering services to the community in partnership with you, not in competition with you, of course. And we appreciate the help that we've had, and I also want to say, um, that if you don't have a church home, we'd love to have you come to the churches in your own town that you represent, and we still are very interested in our little community, we have people from all over the county that come to the church, but we realize this little area is ours, our heart, and what we, that's why the dental plan came about, was primarily for the town. And just given that on that, we have fifty-four people that have made appointments, and about that many again are waiting lists, and at least five are from Old Town. We did distribute, which is five more than we've ever had.
Yeah.
And, uh, we distributed flyers and gave them, just like I mentioned to you guys last time, we handed them out to, with priority to the rest of the town first, so they had about three days before the rest of the, uh, public, you have about the number called with the appointments, and I think that's where our five, I don't know who they are, but I know my per, person that called back all the numbers, made the point, says she thinks they're five. People that are coming, again, that's a big improvement for us, we're very, very thankful. A permit this time is about another hour each event for the community, it's really not kind of my thing, it'll be fun, but it's an outdoor music concert, uh, it's gonna involve, it's gonna be on September seventh, the Saturday afternoon, from five until seven, and it's gonna involve food, I think there's gonna be some stuff there for the children to come, there's gonna be, I believe, three music groups, they're all kind of Christian-based, one is bluegrass, one is country, and one is contemporary, and I've been to bluegrass and country, I don't exactly know the difference, but they do, and so, and there'll be our, our crowd anticipation, we're preparing the same way with porta-potties and, uh, informing the police and everything, we're gonna be doing it, and the emergency responders, but our anticipation is probably about a third of what was at the car show, a hundred to a hundred and fifty people. They will, they'll be in and out, but it's a little more, the car show, people are wondering out through the whole event, this will be more of the likely, come around five and stay for at least an hour or so, so. If you have any questions, that's what we're planning to do, and I don't think we have another event for a little while anyway.
Okay.
Do you have any questions or anything about that?
Y'all have got a lot of, lot of property over there, a lot of parking and whatnot, if you ever need to, think you might need to come over here and do something, let us know.
About parking or?
Well, parking or just having something over here.
We did, and that was one thing, is that was one of, and we're not finished, we've had, and I don't want to, I know we had at least one Easter egg hunt right here, and we've had a Christmas Carol thing here twice, like, cause I remember one of those on my birthday, it was freezing cold, and I was out handing out flyers the afternoon before, I thought, my gosh, I wish I never hit this cold in Jordan in December, but I remember that we've had a couple things, we'd like to do more, we had a spring picnic right here, and something else, cause I remember we've used the, uh, facilities, we've, as of, and I was here for all that, I don't ever remember having anyone from the town come, and the only reason we did it, we've had, our facilities are fine for all we wanna do, but we felt like, you know, that's probably better than neighbors to actually bring it over to the community. We've not had as, the, the five that are coming for the dental plan, or the first five we ever had, just taken anything. So, but we have, it's a great idea, and we'll hopefully do that again, I know Mayor Salem, he always wants to have a Carol sing, so we did it twice, and my music guy came over here and led, and I was with him, but I would never leave the music, that destroyed it. But they did a great job, enjoyed themselves, and I don't, Ms. Polly came to something, I can't remember what it was you came to.
We have a Christmas thing, happy Easter time.
Yeah, yeah, we had Easter egg hunt, and it was all free, we publicized, we don't, we don't charge for anything.
I think we were gonna come to a Christmas thing, but it was freezing cold.
Yeah, yeah, I remember, I remember quite well.
That was pretty weird.
Yeah.
Anyway, we appreciate the support, appreciate what you're doing, and we wanna partner with you as best we can.
Yeah.
Any details?
Well, we're open to it.
Wonderful, I can tell, thank you.
Wallace, your music director had contacted us at one time for your concert a couple, a few years ago, to use our, um, pavilion in case of rain, cause rain was predicted, but we were booked, that's another thing.
And that's a good, well, that's a good problem, but, you, what, you know, what you hate says, a facility like that.
Right.
Just vacant, especially on weekends, but.
Do you have plenty of parking, bathrooms, not, I mean?
We don't have enough parking for Sunday right now, and they're working on it, the, they cleaned out that lot between us and the ones for sale, and then let it grow up, it looks like a jungle there now, but we're trying to figure out how we're gonna do more parking for us,
Okay.
Uh, for our church, and of course, whenever there's something, I think when the movie guys were here, they, something out there, they were gonna call us about parking, they did, and if they'd been watching too.
Do you have any questions, councilors?
Do you have any questions about the permit? Okay, can we get a motion?
Who did we allow vote, as you stated?
Okay, Polly made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alex has the second, all in favor? Unanimous?
You ready to go?
Good deal, thank you, appreciate it.
Of course, I have it on my calendar. Um, so the next new business is the variance request for the sign, the replacement of the VP sign at sixty-five ninety-two Highway fifty-four.
Right, so that's on page sixteen at the bottom of your packet, page sixteen. Uh, you'll recall that earlier this year, we had a similar request for the same location, same company, but this is a different request in the sense that they want to put signage along the rooftop island above the gas stations itself. To me, it's almost routine, I think that, in my opinion, I really don't see much that stands out that says it really needs a variance, but the reason it's here is because when I've re, viewed the sign ordinance, uh, your ordinance literally says that you can't have internal elimination on your signs, and this does. Also, the sign that you currently have has internal elimination, it seems close to a one-to-one replacement and renewal, just making it better, but it was just enough there, um, I consulted Brad, he when we looked at it and said, it's just enough there, let's give it to you guys, and that way you can make a call on whether you would agree with this sign or not. Really, I think it's an improvement, I just don't see any personal problem with it.
So did that, the ordinance refers to, uh, all signs, not just road signs?
It refers to multiple types of signs, yes, okay.
How about the sign, is the size gonna be much bigger?
No, sir. I mean, when I actually asked him about it.
He said it would have one less logo or something like that.
Right, it's like it's on four sides and it'll go down to three sides, and the way he referred to it, I gotta find that he actually know, there was something along the lines of, the three existing VP logo signs will be removed and replaced with two VP logo signs, exactly the same size, material and lighting as the existing VP li, uh, signs now, there'll only be two instead of three.
Right.
Um, the electrical will be the same, no changes made to shape, design, structure, the gas can image, I mean, it's as close to a one-to-one replacement or, without being a one-to-one replacement.
Right.
About anything would be an improvement.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So my recommendation, you allow for it.
I motion to accept.
Public hearing.
Oh, it's on.
Yeah, need that one, public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so the variance request is a public hearing?
I guess I did not understand it was, but well, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll, o, open the public hearing to discuss the variance request, the VP sign.
Anybody who wants to speak?
Yeah, anybody?
I don't think I can, I live here.
And then you close the public.
Okay, close the public hearing.
Now you can take it.
Now, I motion to. Cynthia makes a motion to accept the variance request, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Polly has a second, all in favor? Unanimous? All right. Um, the next item is the consideration of a human resources con- consultation agreement with the Georgia Municipal Association.
Okay. So this is an agreement, so give a little bit of context, about a year ago, you'll recall that Julie actually, um, resigned. About a year ago.
But we did not let her leave.
We did not let her go, she's in it for the glory and the money, as it's been already said. Okay? When she resigned, I spoke to several people to see if they had interest in coming on board and letting Julie do as she had to do. And the biggest, uh, feedback that I got was from those who I did talk to, they really do wanna work here, but they can't afford to work here. Again, everything rises in cost, and they just would not have the affordability to do it at the rate of payroll. Uh, also, uh, as has been discussed in times past, you really do wanna make this place a, an attractive place, that you wanna get employees and retained employees. And right now, there's not, um, employee benefit, there's no retirement, there's none of that, and so you, there's really good in being here, but at the end of the day, the question is, how long can somebody stay here and, and build a life off of? So, this is part of step one, step one is, let's take a look at the job descriptions, and let's take a look at what is marketable to pay, this is what GMA does, when I worked in the county, is what Crowe Vincent Institute of Government does. They look at other towns our size, so we're not gonna be compared to Atlanta perhaps, or Columbus, but you look at towns our size and say, for a town our size, what do people pay to retain employees? Um, this is a conversation that I began back in January with GMA, and they've been busy, and we've been busy, and sometimes it feels like we're just sort of passing each other up as we're doing our thing, but they have already begun doing some of the work, we called them and said, hey, where are we at, and they said, oh, we forgot, we, we have a contract, and here's the contract, and so, they'd already stopped, they'd already started, but I'm on stop to make sure you guys were aware. This contract for them to go to similar towns to take a look to see what is marketable, and how do you start building job descriptions, is a cost that's unbudgeted for us, but it's two thousand dollars, two thousand. But it's objective, it comes from them, and I think it's the first step to saying, this is what we can do to start attracting people, so that when people like Julie lead, we're not scratching and hoping, you know well by having her. But at the end of the day, you have to be able to get somebody who's able and willing to come in and do it.
Right.
And that's where we're at.
And also, you know, when you hire, it also costs much more to train someone and go through the whole process, so we really wanna be able to keep our good people.
All that information is public information, though, you can find out how much everybody makes all over the state, based on population, we did that, remember, back when we were doing the Mayo Sound.
Right, so this is more of a study of everything that it, that is offered, and it kind of, you know, puts it in line, whereas we can, we can compare, but this is more of a, a deeper dive study, so we stay.
And this is not something that you're, you hold into, when they come back with the information they have, this is not saying, you must do what they say, this is them coming to and saying, here's a professional study, professional look, and this is what they recommend we could or couldn't do, and ultimately, it's up to you what you wanna do.
They also interview us, right?
Yes, part of it will be, they're going to come in with their staff and actually interview the three of us, there's only three employees, and interview each of us, and find out what we do, where we really land with what we do, um, and make, and make a call, and, and make a decision on where we really stand. So what's the end result, does it, I don't know, but I think at the end of the day, it's a good objective work.
They do it by size, but what about the location, because if you're down in South Georgia fastest, and then you're right into Atlanta, there'd be a great difference in every benefit and every job they had to do, so how does that fit into the?
That's a great question, because some towns are bigger than others in some place.
Well, we do it by the sound, I'm sure you do it by size, but location of the town is probably more important than the size of it.
Yeah, I think that, that had a lot to do.
It would have a lot to do with it too, it would, it would. And how, how's that gonna play at this point, I don't know, I don't know, we haven't found out this path, to my knowledge, I don't think this town has ever come this path.
Floyd, under scope of work, uh, for three full-time positions, is that because we indicated to them that that's what we're looking for, is three full-time positions, like?
No, so it was clear to them that we have one full-time position, that's me and two part-time. But I will say this, cause that's a good question, um, part of what, as also indicated, there are no benefits, you can retire if you're here, for instance, right, you have no 401A, there's no insurance, there's none of that as well. And speaking to GMA, we have the ability to go into a cool sort of benefit program with them, but to do that, you have to have two full-time employees. If you have just one, like we do, you don't qualify, and that's one of the reasons we're not in that program. So it would be, um, looking possibly to saying, what would it take to stand up another full-time? Convert one of our part-time into a full.
But does this language limit them to say, looking at two full-time positions or four full-time positions?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
This language of three full-time positions, does that, is GMA only gonna make a recommendation of what it would look like with three full-time? Maybe they get into it, and they think, you know what, actually, you could do well with what you've got.
They may come back and say three, but I, I, they, they come back and say three, but I've said that we're looking to do a potential one more full-time. I, I don't know what the recommendation will be, but I've said that, you know, based on what they provide and offer, that going to a full-time, second full-time position is not outside the scope.
Well, I would assume that, I mean, if you could do it for, they would tell you, I just wanted to.
Then they would do it for. Yeah, I'm not trying to.
If it wasn't limiting language, then they're like, oh, well, we said we'd look at three, and we looked at three, you know?
Right. No, I think what they're really trying to say is that we have three employees of what it would take.
Right, right.
If they could need more time, okay, yes.
Just what they asked you, huh, also evaluating the scope of what we need at this point, to say how many we do need, would they determine that?
Um, they would give probably a recommendation of that.
Yeah.
But I would think they would likely say that as well, I think it really, the, the real gist of this, though, is making sure that the three employees that you have are marketable, and that, um, we're doing right by them, and that we can attract people as well, I think that's really where we're at. Whether they come back and say you really need four or five, whatever, at the end of the day, fundamentally, it's your call. They're gonna come back with recommendations, and you can say, you agree, you think it's, you can, whatever you wanna say, but this will be their recommendation to you.
So we don't need to ask them, in other words, tell us what would be the two points?
I've already told them that we have three.
Can we request certain things for them to look at, that's what I'm asking.
I'm sure we could, um, do you have anything in particular?
Well, just based on what they were saying, cause I see it say also, um, for three full-time, so I just wanna make sure we do it for one full-time and two part, and maybe two full-time, or maybe one full-time, one part, just to get a whole scope, like you said.
Sure.
It's not what we have.
Right, yeah, so I did not talk to them about, let's go with three full-time employees.
Yeah.
And so if we need to clarify the language on the contract, we can certainly say.
That way.
We can look at two part-time, or two full-time, I guess, or how many guys.
It's a way to rule that it, you know?
Right.
Well, at least we, we'll have some idea of where we need to be, rather than flying blind.
Right, yeah.
That's also what I'm not concerned, is that I don't want us to be flying blind.
As far as, you know, two versus three versus two and a half, or whatever, that's.
Right.
That's just an issue.
I really don't want the town to be flying blind, and I'll be honest, there are times whenever I kind of think that's what has been going on, and I think we can have, and that's why I'm really interested in this step outside, let the experts who know it, and have the time to delve into it, do it, and come back with a recommendation, and that way, also, the danger of me coming back and saying, I did the research, if you really have no idea, because I may be impacted by my own findings, and saying that I'm gonna doctor it up a little bit. I would just prefer that I can come back and say, here's a third party, uninterested, this is their findings.
Right.
Right?
So, we have a motion.
So did you wanna clarify the language, I can make it go back to the bathroom?
I, I don't know, I just, um, don't wanna us, us have to go back again and get it analyzed again after they did twice again.
No, I agree with that too.
If we decide to say, well, we should have asked for this, I just wanna make sure we asked for everything.
Then I can ask them, if the council's willing, I can just say, why don't we look for two full-time employees, one part-time, and take the three language out, we can do it that way.
I mean, to me, it's more like, look at our resources and.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that their scope wasn't like it, here's how you could squeeze in three full-time employees, if they felt like.
Yeah, and that was never, but I did tell them.
I just wanna make sure we're not locked into that language, that they're like, well, here's a couple options.
Right, right, now, I don't know what the final product will be that they bring back, but I do know what I've told them is that we're looking to potentially stand up a part-time, two of the time.
Right, so we know where to get those benefits.
Right.
So what do you guys think?
Um, also, we'll make a note too, when I put this, this agenda packet out, Brad did write me and say that, uh, the language in your contract refers to, that's the city of Sharpsburg.
Okay.
I reached out to GMA and had them change it over to say town of Sharpsburg, right, where a town, not a city. But getting the new contract back to them, I still found at least three areas where they refer to us as a city. So I went through and scratched out city, put in town, and so when we make the motion, we'll say that it needs to be amended language to town of Sharpsburg as well, and all of those places.
Right. Right. So...
And also, if we do agree that it's two thousand and budgeted, so I'd ask for that to come from the contingency.
Well, our motion, this not helping your...
No.
You're good. Okay, Cynthia made a motion that we accept with the, um, change to...
From city to town?
Yeah.
And did you guys want to make it two full-time employees, not three, or do you want to leave it as it is?
Let's just, let's leave it as whatever necessary to not have to narrow us down to like a box of...
Why can't they advise us? Let's see what we need to have done.
Right.
Yeah.
Cynthia made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Tom has a second. All in favor?
And this is also two thousand with contingency, right?
Yes.
Okay.
unanimous?
Okay, thank you.
And we have, the next item is the review and discussion of the town budget.
You guys haven't seen one of these in a while.
I know.
Yeah, at some point, frankly, I will be tired of coming in and saying, hey, we're doing good. I, I can't come in and say that pretty often, and that hasn't changed, but I do want to give you guys a, just kind of a status on where we are. You haven't seen it in a while. And I'm actually looking at page number thirty-eight, that's around that. And you'll see on the far left, well, I already have the American Rescue Plan Act. Some of those you've seen multiple times before. In fiscal years twenty-one and twenty-two, we received a total of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars in ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act funds. And as we've said many times, you have to either spend it or allocate it by the end of this year. If you don't, then it has to go back to the federal treasury. Over the years, in two thousand and twenty-three, council approved the purchase of a printer and a copy machine using those funds. And just in June of this year, you agreed to sixteen thousand, one hundred for codifying ordinances. I will say that the check just cleared this past Friday and they have a hundred and fourteen ordinances now they can look at to get that going. Also, in purple, you'll see that I have, and I know purple means nothing to you guys, but for me, it's just a reminder. You have another, um, seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-five of allocated funds. Uh, two thousand, five ninety-five of that is for the annual return service for next year's, uh, ARPA, or for code fine. And then five thousand is for Brad and his legal services when it comes to code fine. Okay? That leaves ninety-seven thousand to spend. That number's a little misleading and here's why. Also, in June, you'll recall, Coweta County came in and they had, um, paid accidentally Wellsburg Station. And they asked us if we would like to pay the rest of it and council agreed. Uh, the not-to-exceed amount was seventy-one thousand, two sixteen, of which twenty thousand, eight hundred and seventy was what you guys agreed to for the L-Bed funds and the residual to come from American Rescue Plan. That residual is another fifty thousand, three hundred and forty-five. So it's a long way of saying you have about forty-seven thousand dollars left to allocate or spend by the end of this year. Forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four. As far as Coweta's concerned, by the way, we have not yet received an invoice for Wellsburg. We're still waiting on it, so that still has not been paid by the town. But we are aware and that is council-approved already. But you have forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four to spend. We've been looking at several things on what you can spend it on. Furniture, computers, we've been looking at several items and some of those have gone a little bit quicker than others. At this point, I'm going to turn it to Julie, who has information on furniture. I've asked her to brief the council on it as we're trying to get a decision from you guys on, um, how we should go with this forty-seven thousand. Especially since you have about four more months to make a decision. So Julie?
Okay, we reached out to four companies, one being local, the other one, the other three being out of our town, uh, out of our county. One never completed the quote. Um, we've reached out to her several times and she hasn't gotten back to us to finish it. Uh, one of the quotes came in, uh, at fifty grand and did not address all of the things that we spoke about in the interview. The third one is a company up in Buonanotte and they came in at a really low-ball figure, again, not addressing everything. Um, also that their furniture is made out of the country in Southeast Asia. The fourth company is the local company out of Newman. Um, he comes in at just under forty thousand. And this would be for all-new furniture in the lobby area, the clerks' area, the deputy clerk's area, and the mayor's office. And it include, this includes, um, fireproof filing cabinets, which we are in dire need of because we have a lot of issues with information that should be kept under. God forbid there's a fire in this building, the records would be, they wouldn't be able to be recovered. This includes the back storage room, that's in back of the bathrooms out here. We're going to, it, it's cleared out, it's going to be cleaned up. It would include ten metal and wood shell units that we can store bankers' boxes of records, which we need to do a major overhaul of all of our records. New chairs, new desks, um... Conference table for the mayor's office, more updated furniture, different, different colors, different fabrics and things like that. So it would be, it would be a, um, a real plus for our office because right now it's pretty...
We're at a point where my office, my furniture gets taped, so it doesn't just open automatically. Um, today, I was ducking furniture doors that were opening up and I'm out and bringing myself as I'm standing up out of my chair and knocking myself in the head with furnished doors. That happened twice today.
Sorry.
Um, but I mean, there, there's a lot of, you know, and so we looked at furniture. That's one of the things we looked at. We've also looked at security. Uh, we've also looked at flooring, but we're really starting to land at furniture too. When you walk into the office and your furniture is being taken together, you've got, um...
Chairs that are falling.
Chairs that are falling apart and things look mismatched. It sets a tone as well. It just does. And again, you're going to have to spend it on something, so this was one of the areas we looked at.
And I did go offside to look at one of the offices in Coweta, um, to see the type of furniture that they had from this company. And their furniture is all made in America. They will come in, they will get rid of our old stuff, they will deliver it, set it up, free of charge, all included in the price.
And take away the old stuff.
And take away the old. Whatever we decide to do, if some things are salvageable to be sold, we can do that. But, um, if we go with this company, there is, well, any company, any furniture company, there is a probably five, two, seven, or eight week, um, order time.
Order and installation.
Order and installation.
Yeah.
And that's a big, the installation part especially.
So that is one of the options that we have. Frankly, it's brought to you guys because it's one of the ones that we have sort of a finality on. And is this something that council is, would be willing to consider? And if so, we can bring it back on the next agenda and we can actually have a formal vote with final real numbers. But I think we're on the real track on, at least on this part, but again, we're getting to sort of crunch time on what do you guys want to do?
Also, it's movable. They will move it for us.
They're going to move it, so if we ever update the town hall or go somewhere else, they will be able to move it. We can get the, the furniture moved around too.
You said three things. You said furniture, security, and what did you, the third thing again?
The flooring. If you look at the floor, for instance, in here, and it is, it's all cracked and broken down.
What about the floor? Is flooring in there included?
No, sir, it's not. It's not. We've actually asked for a flooring company to come and take a look and they did. And like similar to others, we will be, we are told that they'll get us quotes and then they never get us quotes. Um, but if we do the flooring in there, one of the things that came out of it is we would have to move all the furniture out ourselves. They don't do that kind of stuff. Or we'd have to get somebody else as well. So that's another factor we could look into is if we're bringing furniture in and we're moving furniture already out. Then we could put carpeting in, something like that as well, and make it all one stop shop. We could do it that way too. I really don't know if carpeting would be in there. Would that be another potential addition that we could do?
Well, our camera's working again.
No, ma'am. No, they got blown out. And so we've actually asked for some quotes off of cameras. And part of the quote system is getting cameras out there as well. You recall when they built, rebuilt the parking lot, they tore the wiring out underneath the ground. And so to reinstall it is like another ten grand is the number we keep getting off of that to, is cameras out there, which is important. So maybe that's out there. That's part of it.
Well, those files that you were mentioning in the furniture category, would they be considered security?
I think that they, in some degree, in some degree, because they were, be fire resistant. What we're looking for is fire resistance. So if this place got fire, potentially your records wouldn't burn. Right now, as you know, some of those records are exposed. You can just literally walk in the office and see them right now. So if there was ever a fire there, you'd lose them pretty quick.
I personally like security as opposed to furniture.
I'll take it all, but I'm just trying to get you what I've got so far. And so, you know, trying to get you what I got so far. And so far, the most responsive to our request has been these furniture companies.
So you can bring us the quotes on the next, uh, agenda?
We can. If you, are we on the right track? Are you guys willing to, to consider if we put this on the next agenda for your formal approval or consideration?
Yeah.
Are you? Okay. Then I will ask Julie, will you mind going ahead and...
That's on flooring, right? None of that has anything to do with the floor out here or in there?
None that we're discussing. No, sir. No, no.
Now, let's go beyond the next agenda. A choice of one in particular?
It's going to be the, it's going to be the four, uh, companies that we've requested info from. Uh, two of them right now have provided very little, one provided some, and then we'll have the recommended request as well on the recommended company. But that will, assuming that this passes, uh, council approval next month, and that will basically allocate and or spend, um, your remainder of ARPA. You may have about seven thousand or so left, depending on final numbers, that you can work with a little bit. Maybe that would be carpeting. We'll start looking into seeing where else we could spend that. But again, either spend it or you lose it. So, yeah. Okay. So we'll get that on the next agenda. Did we have that, Jules?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so, um...
If you have any luck with the flooring ones too.
We've brought them in. Alex, we've brought them in. We actually had three companies who came in here, literally walked these floors and said they'd get us quotes and not a single one did. Not a single one did.
I still have the quotes in my mouth.
I don't know if they're updated, but I would love to get some assistance if you got them.
I, hold on, at the same time that I did the library, I want them over here too.
Yeah, the, basically that, from my perspective, it got ghosted. So, yeah. But if we got them or we can get them back and resurrect them, you guys would... Okay.
So the item on old business is discussion of received quotes for the solar-powered signs?
And, uh, can I say this very quickly about the budget too?
Yeah.
Um, of course, we can go line item by line item, but I just wanted to point out that as far as revenue is concerned, we're exactly where we anticipated. Um, these numbers are current as of July thirty-one. And of course, July thirty-one represents fifty-eight percent of the year completed and we had received down to the percentage, the anticipated revenue.
Nice.
Okay, down to the percentage. And you can see the numbers in front of you. That's on page thirty-nine. Also, on page forty, um, we're actually under budget on our expenses. In other words, we anticipated spending about thirty-eight or fifty-eight percent expenses by this time and we're at fifty-three. And to my knowledge, all major expenses that we're looking at for this year have been paid. So I think we're going to be fine overall. Some line items have gone higher, some are lower, but as a unit, uh, we're actually doing well with our expenses. So appreciate that.
Yeah. So the next item is the speed limit signs, the radar.
At the last council meeting, there was discussion about, do we want to take the, um, radar sign that we currently have, it's in storage, and put it backed up on highway fifty-four or one fifty-four? So we looked into it. During last council meeting, there was discussion about the issues that are with the current radar as well. I'll touch on that in a second. As looking into it, what you'll see is a quote. We generally will get our signs from a company called CDC. That's where we generally go. And I asked them to give me a quote on solar-powered signs. There's a reason I did. Because what was reported to me and also in the minutes that I provided in the agenda package is where I have, um, our former mayor and a former council member talking about how the current radar sign required replacing batteries every nine days. And that he had to get them back to the pickup truck in order to replace the battery every nine days. And when I read stuff like that, it makes me wonder if at some point, people give up on it. At what, I mean, every nine days, I'm out there replacing batteries on this, with pickup truck. And so that the, no, town doesn't even have a pickup truck, so that truck at that time was being borrowed. So the question I've got is, do we really want to go down this path any further? I have quotes on a solar sign. Solar sign is more, I grant it, we bought the, um, the current radar sign some years ago. But at the end of the day, it's not being used and there's a reason it's not being used. It's sort of impractical as I read and have been informed. Solar signs wouldn't require all of that, wouldn't require being out there every nine days and replacing batteries and getting on the side of the road with the trucks. So is this something you, the council, are interested in, or was that more just a discussion piece last council meeting? Or where do you want us as staff to go with regard to this?
I'm not interested in this.
You're not interested?
No.
Not interested?
The, uh, the sign was, was secured so that we could quantify speeding problem on Main Street and Terran County. It's not, and so it is a, it's a data collection process. It's not to set up to try to get people to slow down on the highways. I mean, that sounds wonderful, but it's not, you're not going to speed it, you're not going to get the bank for the duck. You're not going to get people to slow down because there's a radar sign. And if, if it's, if it's solar, it's going to be, it's going to be hooked to one spot. It's not going to be moved around, which you could get some, you could get some control on that. But if it's in one place, people are just going to, after a couple of weeks, they're just going to not see it.
Familiarity breeds contempt kind of approach?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think. It needs much more out of you.
Well, also, if the question was, should we put it on fifty-four or one fifty-four? And I asked Julie, she's my right hand on so many things around here, on talking to the powers that be, fifty-four and one fifty-four state highways. So she spoke to Coweta County and she spoke to GDOT and Julie, your findings work?
Um, we would have to put the sign in one spot. You'd have to prepare a letter to GDOT asking that permission. If you put it on fifty-four, you can't arbitrarily move it to one fifty-four or to sixteen at your whim or whatever, you know, at, at our doing. So we have to be, if you want to move it, you'd have to get permission, you know, to wherever you wanted to put it. Uh, there were some things about, um, you cannot use their sign to post it. So like if they have a forty-five mile per hour speed limit sign, you can't put your machine on that pole. It has to be your own pole. Um, also, um, you cannot have, you cannot have a laser without getting permission from your local authorities because there are speeding devices that are laser, um, operated that it could interfere with those devices. So you do have to get, you have to inform your local law enforcement of your intentions. So it is, it is a bit of a process. And that's it?
I must say, I'm the one that broke up this thing. I never, ever had any intention of even considering purchasing more signs. I was mentioning the fact that we spent nearly thirty-five hundred dollars several years ago and the signs are sitting in storage.
Yes, ma'am.
And that was, and that sign, one of the batteries was able to be moved from place to place. But never in my wildest thoughts was I thinking about buying another.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I had clarity on word.
You could have just asked.
Well, I, it was a council discussion, so I wanted to make sure that we heard from council. Well, I, it was a council discussion, so I wanted to make sure that we heard from council. I think what I'm hearing is no interest is on.
We got, we got, we got a thirty five hundred dollars worth of information out of it.
We might be able to sell it to another town.
Cause I don't, it's a very good idea. But you don't have to tell them. If you tell them when they're useless and then you go sell them to somebody, that doesn't sound very ethical.
We had a, a call from a small town that was wanting to know about our sign. Who did we buy it from and how much we paid for it, et cetera. But we might, we might could sell it.
Yeah, we could lease it, lease it.
So I'll consider the signs of that issue from here on and you guys wanna resurrect it, you can do it yourself.
But I did go back a minute to look and everybody of the council at the time thought it was one fly here.
Yes ma'am.
And Stan, who was on the council at the time, even requested it to be down on one fifty four near his house.
Yes, he did, I saw that too. And then I, but it's not and so it makes me assume either interest was lost or we couldn't even get the approval back. But I really don't know, it was a little bit before me, but I'm working on some assumption off that.
Again, again, it, we, it did what we wanted. And, and that should be safe, so if we sell it, we can.
Okay, okay. Um, I think that concludes our agenda.
Alright, so public comments?
I'm stuck to the chairs. It's plastic. We, that's. Floyd did ask that I, I'm gonna start, um, just from the DDA side of things. I am gonna start printing out a P and L sheet as well as a balance sheet to share with um, uh, with the town clerk and deputy and so that they'll have those on files if anybody from council ever wants to see, you know, that way that they're just always available to you. Um, we are gonna have the final town motto recommendations by August. Um, my hope is to, and I don't know if we want to put it on the agenda yet or if y'all would want to see. I, I probably can have all of them to Floyd. Actually, no, I can't because ours, ours is the same day as y'all's, we're just in the morning. This week, this month, it just kinda messed up. But anyways, we'll have all of them to you in August.
We'll get together and we'll talk about how.
And then I'd like to maybe get, you know, something on the calendar this year for y'all to read the recommendations and maybe vote on something. Um, I know the newspaper had reached out to me to ask because they put an article, they asked if we had decided on one. I told them we were still gathering. Um, we've got some really good ones. I will tell you, um, I, I, I shared this with the DDA. We, the one that I've seen the most, I think like maybe four people sent it, was Small Town Big Heart. I thought that was great. Um, we've seen some hilarious ones such as Sharpsburg, not Tom's Crossroads. Um, Sharpsburg, not where Costco is. I mean, we, we're gonna share all of them, but then we're gonna like narrow it down to what we feel like are like top contenders. But it's kinda hilarious to see what people are sending.
Sharpsburg, we're not who you think we are.
Yeah, there are people a lot, um, but.
Sharpsburg, we're the smart people in here.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot, but you're almost like, oh my goodness, I'm happy some people put their name like with their stuff. But um, so we're excited to share that. Um, we did finally complete the final design sprint with Historical Concepts. It is very exciting. Um, Elizabeth has the email now, so she'll be able to send it to y'all. And I'd like to get on the agenda in the next couple of months to be able to come do a presentation for y'all and kinda show them what they've shared with us, what the ideas were. Since you're kinda in the know. Um, other than that, we're, we're just trucking right along. We've started working again for the Sharpsburg Christmas market plans. I would actually love to get with you on volunteers.
Oh, hi, I'm sorry.
I wanna get with you on volunteers. Um, because last year we had about a thousand people that came through um, on that day and this year we're doing it for three days. So we're, we have free stuff in the community center for families and kids to do. And we worked short volunteers last year to be able to, to outreach in that way. Um, I think that's about it. I just wanna kinda update y'all, we still meet, we would love if somebody wants to come. We're, we meet the first Monday on um, the, in, in the mornings, we're at nine AM in the library. Um, it's very, sometimes we have coffee, sometimes we don't, but it's, it's very, uh, we've had two new businesses that joined us this past week. Modern Woodman is up there, moved in by Sharpsburg Pizza. They sent a representative, super nice, they're what's called a fraternal investment company. So they actually have to reinvest a certain percentage of their funds, whether it be nonprofit or in their community. And so they are excited to work with the DDA and they were actually were asking me what they could do um, for the library because they love to support children and literacy. They actually have an entire reading program that they bought and they give away to schools, homeschools. They like have all this that they share with people. Um, so that was great. And then, um, the other thing is we do have, I know she hasn't filled out her um, business license yet, but there is gonna be a new tenant that's moved in into where T Antiques was. Um, she actually was a art teacher at my son's school and she is going to be opening up an art studio. And it basically will be open for classes for children, especially homeschool kids. Um, she's gonna have open studio, like where anybody can come and paint. Um, she's gonna be open, I think, five days a week and they're pretty excited about that. She's hoping to post a schedule, I think it's September. So that's exciting too, because we've never had anything like that as well.
Yeah, awesome.
That's all I know.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, polling of the council?
I have nothing.
I have nothing too.
Sarah, do you have something?
Introduce yourself, talk to the yard.
Uh, my name's Jordan Lynch with the New Times Herald.
Oh, welcome. He's our new, he's our new representative for Sharpsburg.
Just here to stay up to date, see what's going on.
Awesome, thanks for having me.
Absolutely.
Tell me your name again.
Uh, Jordan Lynch, J L D A N.
My turn or anybody else? Okay, my turn.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll notice that Alan is not here. Uh, this past Thursday, we received an email from him, he is done with videography at all. So your meetings at this point in time, short of bringing in a cell phone like that, it's not being recorded with video record. Um, we've reached out to, I believe, four people, I believe it's four, uh, to see if they have interest in being our new videographer. Two have replied. Um, one of them is one that you recommended April and that one actually turns out to be the low bidder at two twenty five. Two twenty five, Alan was being paid at one fifty, so seventy five dollars more. Uh, do you have interest um, in having him come over? Cause I know there's been some conversation about should we even continue with videographer? So just wanted to bring it to you guys, see if you have interest at all, in my opinion, I think it's a good idea.
So why did Alex?
He just said he's, he's basically tired, he wants to spend time with his wife and he's enjoying recording music. So if council's good, it's more than budgeted, but end of the day, you can get a professional photographer here and videographer.
Any reason to touch base with the county school system? Don't they have a, don't they have a pretty aggressive videography type?
You know, some school? That's actually a great idea. I, I'll tell you what, um, in my previous time, I thought about doing that at a different school system too, in a different place. And they actually chose not to do it, but that's something I recommended at the other place. I can reach out to County Accountant, see if they have any interest in it as well.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm thinking of is, we, you know, back four years ago, we uh, they had a debate and they filmed it and televised it.
Okay.
And all the, all the production was done by students.
It's a good idea.
It actually is a great idea and I actually, so we'll do that. We'll reach out to um, County Accountant School System, see if that's something that they need. And maybe send students over, maybe they can get even school credit for coming over and.
Yeah.
Right? So, great idea. So we'll, I'll look into that and come back to you with that. Glad to. Okay. That's a great idea, alright. Um, about the doors, we talked about getting these doors fixed again. Uh, we had three vendors who showed up. Again, the three vendors ended up getting us quotes and never came back. Never came back. The only thing that we have off of any of them is that that may be more of a general contractor question than just a door payment question. But just letting you know, that's still a part of it. Um, we talked about getting updated computers. The company we work with is VC Three, we went for quotes for them back in June. They promised they'd have quotes to us in a week. I've reached out to them at least three or four times since that time. They have not returned any email or phone calls since. If you get the frustration that I have, it's complete frustration. It's like we're beating it out on a wall. Last thing, um, Arbor Valley, we need to talk about them just a bit. Last week, we had an insurance appraiser who came over and went to see all of our properties. And so Julie walked him around and part of it was going to Arbor Valley, which is of course a property that they leased to us. When she went over there, she discovered that one of their bathrooms is boarded up. They had not informed us of it, that it's boarded up. So we inquired on why is it boarded up? And once again, we found out that the sewage pipe that is there is broken again. And when I say again, it seems like we get this issue at least once every year and a half or so. If, I, I know since I've been here, it's been fixed, I think, twice. And I've heard rumor before that even before my time, it would get broken. It is so shallow to the ground that as they drive their trucks and drive their equipment over it, they break it. Okay? I asked how come it doesn't get buried any deeper than what it is? If this is an ongoing issue, why don't we bury it deeper and fix it? According to Arbor Valley, they were informed by Mayor Wendell when he was here that if you go any deeper than the septic, it just won't work. It just doesn't work, so you have to keep the line shallow, but keeping it shallow means it gets broken. They have a bathroom in the modular building and without our knowledge, they brought in a porta potty and that is also now on their property. And they say one guy uses it maybe once a week. Everybody else that have used the bathroom goes to the modular building. Arbor Valley met with me on Friday, not this past Friday, but two Fridays ago. And we had a verbal conversation. And that verbal conversation, they said that they are willing at their expense to refurbish that bathroom that's been such an issue, the one that's now boarded up. They need storage room and they're willing to, again, at their expense, uh, refurbish it completely, take the bathroom out and turn it into storage. Thought I might bring it up to you guys, end of the day, see if you have any problems or concerns or price of outreach. But I think that fixes two problems. One, an ongoing issue with broken pipes often. And the other, they need the room for storage and they're willing to pay for it.
So they're gonna convert the bathroom to storage?
Yes sir.
And then just, and just.
But they're gonna remain with that um, porta potty outside. They're gonna have a porta potty out there. And they're gonna use the uh, the bathroom that's in their modular building as well. They can use those and they're good with that. But it's verbal, there's nothing in writing about that.
Only concern I've got about it is if you let them have a porta potty out there, it's to prevent other folks from throwing one up anywhere.
Exactly. It's one of the reasons I wanted to bring it to you guys, because that's part of it.
I assume this is inside their cement block building?
Hmm, no, he didn't. Well, the bathroom was in the building, yes.
Yes, the bathroom is in the building. Um, I did not see the porta potty. I don't know where it was, I didn't see it. But the, the insurance person questioned me. She said, what's behind that door? And I was like, oh gosh, it's the bathroom. And they have a piece of plywood over the door.
And again, we found out just because we walked over there, they had not informed us at all.
An option would be to, I mean, this is a, probably a non-starter, but one option would be to build a, a little like, little bathroom on the other side of the street. On the same side as their, their uh, office floors.
Okay.
And tie that into our septic line.
I, I don't know, because if they're already having an issue with the depth that they're already talking about, I don't know if we'd catch the same issue that way or not either. I, I don't know, that's what I'm saying.
I'm just saying if it's on the, on the, on the opposite side of the street, no, no trucks are gonna run, what chance you don't have a breaking problem?
And that too.
So you just, you just uh, you run it from behind their little building over to the, to the septic or to the septic tank.
Okay.
Cause you, you know, technically a septic system's what, eight thousand dollar deal? Eight thousand dollar project? But so you already got the septic tank, you're already, you know, you're gonna do is run the line from a, from a building deck with a shed.
But it's still not being there either for storage, so.
No, they can still, they can still do the storage over there.
No, no, that's right, okay, I'm just thinking of the toppings, I got you.
Yeah, they can still, they can still take your, their problem. I'm just saying that instead of having a, instead of having a septic tank, or a, I'm sorry, porta potty. You know, have them, have them build a, something, a toilet that ties into our septic system on the other side of the driveway.
Should we reach out to a septic company and have them take a look at it and see?
That's who we're talking about. You see what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Because my concern is, you know, we didn't allow Dollar General to have a porta potty out there.
You don't want that being thrown open to the public.
You want you throw it open to the public, then it's harder to walk it back, somebody else should do it too.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you could have a, you could have a light blue and white green city school up there at Manhattan, Terry. If you threw it open.
I get so.
You know what I'm saying?
I got you. We'll talk to a septic company and see. In the meantime, do you guys have any problem with them just go ahead and do that conversion on the meantime?
What's a, what's a conversion? I mean, you can turn any bathroom into storage.
Right, there is a storage room right next door, wall to wall. There's a little, like little room. So I guess they would tear the wall down and make it one big storage room?
But then they're gonna wanna keep the porta potty and I think that's the thing we need to discuss, cause I, you know, don't really want.
We might wanna have that infrastructure looked at again too. I mean, are we sure that there's not more room to drop that pipe?
Right.
I mean, I get that it has to drop a certain amount per foot as it flows in the septic or it's not gonna flow, uh, that's the nature.
At one time it was wide open.
Certainly if they use it for storage though, I, I mean, we don't want the infrastructure modified.
Right.
You can cap the, the drain pipe where the toilet is.
Right.
Cap it so we know where it is and if you don't wanna use it, that doesn't mean.
Yeah, he wasn't talking.
You get to have a porta potty, you're giving up your bathroom for your own purposes.
He didn't talk to me about knocking down walls or anything like that.
Okay, just turning the. Yeah, we would need more details, I think, on how they plan to modify the, any structures internally.
So we need to be talking about potentially.
Just so it's not, if it changes hands. Just if it changes, if the building changes hands, it can be a mess when you build over infrastructure, when you go looking, you know, what was where and, and the next tenant or. I, I think long term, I don't know that the city necessarily has plans to really do much with Arbor Valley, but if we did, you know, I don't think it would include the existing building, but. Would this be something we need to have in writing with them as well, that they're gonna do X, Y, that idea? I would think so as well.
I don't know how their, how their existing facility is in their offices.
It's pretty nice in there now, like, it looks like they painted inside.
Is it, is it a mobile home type here?
It's, you walk in and you're walking into um, what was a dining area and a kitchen. And it's open. And then if you turn to the left, there's offices, like where the bedrooms would be. So I think there's like two or three office rooms. And that's basically it. They use the kitchen as a kitchen, like they have a coffee pot and, you know, things like that, a sink.
If, most of their people leave during the day, so it doesn't seem like.
There's two ladies that work in the office.
How much bathroom do you need for those people?
And he indicated porta potty does exist and he said one guy uses it maybe once a week. So I mean, to answer your question, outside of that, I think there'd just be office staff that would be using it for something.
Well, you know, again, you've got a contract with these folks and then another option is to let them, let them use our bathroom.
They're right there.
They're right there.
So maybe what we do is instead of talking about getting.
Use them all, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just let them use that bathroom and cap the other one off, use it for storage.
Yeah, but they can use the storage, you know. What if you give them a key or something maybe so they're not?
You have to give them a key and let them come and go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's just do that. We already do some work for the County Sheriff's Office. They're already coming go anyway, so these are our tenants. If that's the case, then that would be part of it.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
And that might be the answer.
Um, Brad, do we need to get something in writing off of that? Are they gonna do this at their expense, that kind of thing?
I would, yeah. Simply because I think the lease agreement was far.
Okay, well, um, and maybe you could get your help on some of that then too, just to make sure. But, okay.
I think erosion, I think erosion control is a conversation that has to happen there too. Because when you talk about how heavy are these trucks? When they're going and they're replacing this pipe, is anybody adding anything on top of it? You know, because are they, and these trucks are going over it again and again and, I mean, they'll destroy concrete. So it, it's, it doesn't really, it may not be an issue of how deep the, you know, a little bit of. you know, a little bit of how the deep the pipe is, but also a year and a half of hitting it over and over again is not-
So they've been putting crush and run on top of it, and then it, it gets worn out as they run back and forth and then they rip it out.
Right.
Right.
The solution that was discussed a few years back was to put the pipe itself into a metal conduit, like 30 Cobo's?
Yeah.
Metal pipe?
Yeah.
Like the ones they use on the roads, like on people's driveways, on people's driveways, to do that, to protect the pipe.
So we can open up the bathrooms to them, for their employees, for their use, and then we'll get in writing, um, go ahead, they can pay at their expense and cap it off and turn it into storage.
Yeah, and then they can get rid of their porta potty, and then they can get rid of the porta potty.
What's that?
Tell them to please give her the porta potty.
We'll, we'll have that conversation.
I can see, they must've been hitting on the other side of the building, that catapult, which wasn't helping your business.
And then, um, for me, the last one is neither here nor there, but I'm gonna be out of the office a lot tomorrow, I have to go to Coeita County, text, uh, Commissioner, give them our millage rate documents. But also, my dad recently had surgery, and he is having a follow-up, he'll be in Riverdale, I need to take him there. So, uh, if you need me, I'm on my phone, but I will not be in the office much of the day tomorrow, so that's just a part of it, so, just getting a heads up.
Can I ask a question that has, well, nothing to do with us directly? What's the status of the county and their tax increase, and the meeting they had the other night, that I understand was rather explosive?
Well, I understand it was rather explosive too, and I think that they're not, I, I'm sort of going on a, what I think is true versus what I know is true. But I think that they're lowering, uh, the projected tax, um, what they initially said would be their tax increase, I think they're lowering, getting, taking a look at their budget even further. Um, but as far as where they at currently, I'm not totally positive on that.
Do you know anything?
Um, all I know was that they said if you watched it on TV, it was exciting TV.
It was sending video.
That was the first of three hearings.
Joy made them all.
That was just the first.
Yeah, subscribe to the New Times Herald.
He says subscribe, subscribe.
He says subscribe to the New Times Herald.
Oh, I, I-
Yeah.
It was the first of three hearings, so it was just the first of three hearings.
Yeah, it's on the front page.
Yeah.
They actually had two, one was during the day, which people had a fit that it was at one o'clock in the afternoon, and they had it that night, and then the third one is not until-
No, the, uh-
The first one was last Tuesday.
First one was last Tuesday.
The next one will be seven thirty, the second one will be seven thirty AM, August twentieth?
I think so.
And then the second day, the second night, during the, yeah. So a lot of people are complaining that at seven thirty in the morning, who's gonna go to a county, you know, to a commission meeting?
But they're gonna be there.
So there's a lot of people who are talking this way and that way too, but I think I got the general gist, they're lowering down the millage to a degree, but they're still reworking budgets to-
I think the original proposed increase was like thirty-nine percent, they've dropped it to, I think, eleven as of right now.
Is it eleven, I think last summer it was twenty-one, so is it down to eleven?
They keep saying they're, they're probably gonna drop it down more, so.
Okay, yeah, I keep hearing they're lowering the bar a little bit.
I haven't video.
Who's, who's burying the brunt of it?
County.
The police burying the brunt of it?
I mean, it was just everybody speaking against it, and then, uh, you know, people were, that were cheering, so people rattled back, asked for order, and uh, it's, he said no outbursts, which is, you know, their policy, and, uh, you know, they were calling him a coward and stuff.
He's bored, and I'm like, and he basically told them to, to knock down the, the timber, and so, uh, people are calling him out and saying, we're here to talk to you, and you don't wanna hear from us, and there's a lot of stuff going back.
Yeah, I understand it was, my fault was, if they dropped it from thirty-nine back down towards eleven, is the school board taking the hit mostly, or the police taking the hit, or is it pretty much across the board?
I mean, every, everyone is increasing their millage rate as of right now, except, except for y'all.
Or for that.
I, I cover Sonoy, Sonoy just raised theirs as well, I believe about thirteen percent, so.
I would like to say we're alone, but I think Harrelson and Moreland also are maintaining their millage rate.
Yeah, I can't remember what the school board did, I think they didn't change their millage rate, but they changed something else.
I think millage rate for the school board went up, didn't they raise it by?
Yes, that's not my domain, I wouldn't, they put me on that one.
For sure they did.
I think the City of Hope becoming a nonprofit has really hurt everybody, so. Um, that's like one point six million the school board isn't getting, which is a lot of money.
But they have a few million in the bank, so.
Tis, tis, tis.
Yeah.
I, I'm a senior citizen, and I'm still paying school tax, so that doesn't sit well with me.
But I'm done with all the stuff I had, so appreciate your input on that.
Thanks, I didn't know what the details were.
So I don't have anything in the mayor's updates, don't have executive session. All right.
Make a motion when you get home.
All right.
All right, meeting with motion to your-
My second.
Alex is the second, all in favor?
Uh, everybody that I've got things you need signing, so every one of you, just wait, Tom, now, everybody, I'm gonna do something for you to sign, every one of you, okay?
That was a lot on the agenda.
Paul, we're really sorry.
Let's give him a concert.